Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me? How's everyone doing today? I'm glad to see you here. Karen raised her hand. I don't know if she has a question or if she is having a problem. I shouldn't be on mute. I started my video. I started the recording. Everything should be good to go. I changed up my lighting. I took the opportunity to change up my lighting. I am feeling so much better. I'm still really tired. But it looks like it was a kidney infection. The antibiotics are working. So that means it's not a virus, right? So that's always good. But yeah, it's just been really hard. I've just been tired and run down and achy and all that fun stuff. But how are all of you doing? Oh, the hands up was just a hi. Yay, I'm so glad. I'm so glad. I'm really happy that I could be here with you today. I've tried to minimize the amount of stuff I'm doing, which, as you know, is really hard for me. So I have this webinar today and then I have a webinar. Wait, do I have two tomorrow? I don't know. I think I have one. They have one every day and then none on Friday. So that's good. So I'm not trying to overexert myself, trying to focus on just getting better. And of course, it's freezing cold here, so we can't even go outside or do anything fun. It's like 35 and maybe gonna snow today. I don't know. So let's get started. I know that all of you are busy. Yeah, I mean, and you know, Julie, I'm assuming I definitely don't have it. But you know, there's no way to know because you just, you can't get a test for it anyway. We could all have it. We won't know. No one will ever know. But hopefully, all of you are healthy and feeling well and that your families are doing well. Second week for most of us from working at home. Are all of you working at home? And if you are, is this brand new to you? So I would love to hear from those of you that this is completely brand new. I've been doing this for 10 years, but that doesn't mean it's easy because my kids and my husband are usually not home and I'm usually feeling great and the world's usually not completely coming to an end. So it's different circumstances. But when people say, oh, you've worked from home for years. You've got this down. In a certain way, yes, I have all the setup. I have my routines, but everything's kind of, you know, thrown out the window. Jared says worked from home for the last six years. And oh, Stacy's getting over really bad sinus stuff. That's awful. Jennifer says she's worked at home one day a week for many years. Oh, I love it. Yeah, Cheryl says working from home. I usually do. My family's not here. Julie says, brand new for me. Zoom is my new best friend. I just showed my mom how to use Zoom. And I spent Friday night like micromanaging my 10-year-old daughter's Zoom calls because that was how I really wanted to spend my Friday. And then I went to bed at like 8:00. But it's just so funny how Zoom is just our new, it's our new meeting place. I love Zoom. I've never worked from home at the same time as my husband. This is new. Yes, I will have to say that. I know. That's the tough part is that you're both trying to work full-time and manage all the things you have going on. Like we on Sunday, my husband, that was yesterday. My husband and I realized, we're like, we haven't looked at our week and said, this is when I have a webinar and a conference call. This is like how we want to plan on dealing with the children. The children are fine, but like, and also I'm completely like, if some, a child busts in here, it doesn't embarrass me in any way. But you know, and also for him, he talks to a lot of, you know, business executives and are traditional men that I don't think would be as amused by that. So he's a little bit different situation. But working home from the first time when my husband working remotely, my kids are home with schoolwork to do. We are kind of just, we're sort of homeschooling and sort of not. We are, my husband has a whole schedule. We've got stuff from home. We bought a bunch of, you know, workbooks and things like that. But I'm taking it very casual. If I thought my kids were behind, I would kind of be freaking out. But I'm just being casual about it. If we get a couple of hours of any kind of anything in a day, like any math, any reading. My daughter has been, she's 10 and my son's five. So she's been showing my son how to read a little bit, which has been really awesome. Tween and teen kids home all day. And that has to be so hard for them. So I was thinking, the two age groups that must be the hardest. Toddler, obviously, like newborn baby, that, you know, maybe that newborn babies are hard. But toddler, that would be impossible. And teenager, because all they want to do is see their friends. Maybe they're used to digital connection more and they're used to FaceTiming and stuff like that. But same with my 10-year-old. She's, she's okay with not seeing her friends, but it's really hard for her. Teenagers, I can't even imagine because your friends are like your whole life. Yeah, usually my kids aren't home with me. I work remotely with my, from my whole team. It's a whole new thing with the Kids Home Hubby's military and still has to go to work. Oh, my gosh. My husband works from home now. I do, and my college kids are on online classes. This is just crazy times. So what I wanted to do today is I wanted to do a special session. I even whipped together some slides at the kind of last minute with some examples and some of your questions from the group. So I'm going to share some slides. We're going to talk. We're going to give. I don't even know, Luke, how you do it. Three kids under four at home. I don't know. Actually, hold on. I have a friend, Tim Serantonio. I don't know if you know who he is. He's on Twitter. He's the Director of Strategic Partnerships for Neon One CRM. And he has three girls at home, four or five and under. Twins, and then I think a four-year-old. She might even be a three-year-old. Madness. And he and his wife are both working as well. I have no idea how he does it. So I will, I will actually reach out to him and ask if he has any strategies. But if you don't follow him, he is, what is he on Twitter? I'm going to just go look him up really quick right now because he's actually a great nonprofit resource in general for all of you. And he's a good friend of mine, Midwest. He actually lives in upstate New York, but his Twitter handle, I'll give it to you, is, now I can't find the Zoom anymore, is Midwest Tings, Tim Serantonio. And he's really open and he talks and he doesn't have Facebook. So he uses Twitter almost like he uses Facebook. And he's talking all about his kids and stuff he's doing with them. And he and his wife are navigating this because they both sort of kind of work from home, but she used to travel a lot. And of course, there was daycare, you know, remember daycare at schools? So they're navigating this new reality as well. For me and my husband, like basically, we've resigned ourselves to the fact that we can't do eight, nine-hour days. I mean, we really, it just can't happen right now. So I've had to resign myself to a lot of things, maybe not getting done, plans that I had or things that I wanted to work on. For me, it's a lot easier because I really do have a more flexible schedule. But then, of course, being self-employed, if I'm not working, I'm not making money. And then for my husband, he works in, no, he works in investments right now. So obviously, that's a crazy madness time. But we're trying to figure out like, okay, if he has calls in the morning, maybe I do something with the kids and then I can work later. We just are trying to piecemeal together whatever we can and just make sure that we're on the same page, starting every day. Like, okay, I know I have a webinar too. I absolutely need to do this webinar, like no matter what. And this is my one thing that I 100% have to do today that I can't be interrupted. And then he had several calls this morning. So I was like with my laptop downstairs with the kids, just making sure they didn't go upstairs. We're all just making it work here. We're just, we're making it work, right? Oh, you're in upstate New York. So Tim is like in Schenectady. No, he's in Piscayuna. Is that a town? I actually stayed at his house with his family one time when I was doing a speaking engagement up there. I think it's called Niskayuna? I don't know. Albany, Schenectady. My family's from Albany, too. Day by day, hour by hour, literally hour by hour. I mean, we just had in Massachusetts, a couple of hours ago, Charlie Baker come and issue not a shelter in place, but some kind of order where now businesses that are not essential and nonessential workers are really banned from going to work and they're going to shut down everything that's nonessential. I don't know exactly what that means. I didn't have time to watch the press conference. But it's hour by hour by hour. And that's really what I think we're going to talk about today. That's kind of a good transition. Think about how our lives have changed even since the last time we talked. But since I was just looking at emails and some conversations I was having with people, March 12th, I mean, March 10th, seems like a literal lifetime ago. Oh, Virginia. Kansas did it too. I don't know how many, how many of you are in states with schools closed until the end of the year? We are typically in school till mid-June as well, Massachusetts. I, I have a feeling that schools are going to be shut down. I have a really sinking feeling. And this really stinks for my daughter because she's in fifth grade and she's really close to her friends and she plays sports. And it's like, fifth grade is the big, you're the big cheese in fifth grade. So I'm really upset for her if that happens. But like you said, Stacy, day by day, day by day. Oh, Michigan, Michigan just got that same order. I think all states are at a stay-at-home thing right now, right? But not all of us are at a shelter-in-place. My family and I are not going anywhere or seeing anyone or doing anything. So that's, all we could do is what we, all we can do is what's best for us and our workplaces. Obviously, people are doctors and nurses and mail carriers. And oh, my God, I can't even imagine. I can't even imagine having to do those essential services right now. But those people are the real heroes, right? 100%. Oh, and I already see a queue. Tammy, I could use some tools on how to focus working from home. Some tools. I have to think about that. So I did write a blog post about working from home, but I'm not sure which tools I mentioned other than Zoom. I have a million tools that I can send to you. So that might be something we can talk about a little bit after or I can work on a specialist. And I know I just touched my face, but I did wash my hands. I can work on a special session about that. Oh, Cindy, I know. My energy level for work is so low. That's the other problem. So I think that's really important. That's really important. So what I want to talk about today is I want to give you some examples and some ideas and inspiration, but I don't want to necessarily put more work on your plate. But I want to make sure I'm answering all of your questions. So I want you just to kind of sit back and there's no homework. There's nothing to fill out. There's nothing really to do. But the energy level question, that's because we are in fight and flight, fight or flight response. And that's exhausting. I mean, that Friday, was it two Fridays ago, when my kids were home for the, for the first full day? Everything was shutting down. Every single message I was getting from people was a canceled event, a postponed event, a question about canceling an event, a question about postponing event, something from a business. You remember that day? That day when every single thing was like closing in on you. There were a few days there. And then you just feel the weight on your shoulders and you just feel like this is, I can't even do this. I just left emails unanswered for days. That's kind of how I dealt with it. I'm not a surgeon. I'm not, you know, triaging a response to this crisis. So I thought, okay, I can really leave emails unanswered for a few days. If you're answering a hotline or you're dealing with people in emergency crisis, you can't do that. But people understand now that communications are taking a little bit longer. I would hope that they understand that. And I would hope that you don't worry about looking at every single email from every single business you've ever talked to because that's ridiculous. I was getting emails from, you know, Victoria's Secret. And I was like, what? Why is Victoria's Secret emailing me? I don't care. I just usually shop online with them. I'm trying to find the chat box and it's not. Okay, here we go. Q and A chat. Okay, here we go. Just so I can pull those both up. So I did want to take that, this moment to actually talk about that. Like how, not necessarily how are you doing with work? But the graduation could be canceled. You're dealing with daughters that are devastated. Their graduation could be canceled. You know, you're dealing with the homeschooling situation is not normal. No, the working from home and homeschooling situation is not normal. Yes, it's definitely not normal. The other thing I do want to point out is that even for people that homeschool, this is not normal. So I have heard from a couple of families that I know that homeschool, they said that, oh, everyone's telling them, oh, you've got it so easy. And they said, no, we go out and do stuff. We go to museums. We go to parks. We go to the zoo. Like we go and do things. We don't just sit at home and talk to each other and never leave the house. So I think it's an opportunity where we can all learn from each other and our strengths. But it certainly is a challenging situation for everyone. I mean, I, I struggle to find someone that is not challenged through this, like a sector of people, you know, nonprofits, small businesses, every single person. Ooh, my favorite was the email I got from M and M. Well, I didn't get that email. I have unsubscribed to literally almost every business email because it just got to be too much. But then I did like the businesses that were taking time out to say, not just, you know, we're making everyone work from home. Yes, everyone else is too. Great. But saying, this is what we're doing for, you know, paid vacation or this is what we're doing for paid medical leave. This is how we're increasing salaries. This is how we're stepping up our game and giving everyone laptops. Those emails I appreciated when people were actually doing something new and out of the, not out of the box, but new for them. I did like that. That made me feel, that made me feel good. Or businesses like Zoom that said, we're giving a discount or we're, we're giving a special bonus to people during this time. But to me, and I'm not your boss and I'm not the boss of you, but I really think you don't need to be super productive during this time. It's just, we want to be. And I'll get to a question that was asked in one of my other Facebook groups about our responsibility as nonprofit communicators and just feeling like the weight of having to do everything and be everything to everyone. But we can't and we need to take our mental health very seriously during this time. And we need to just bite off what we can chew. And honestly, if you are in full crisis mode at your organization and you only put up one post this week as opposed to five that you normally do or you put out one email this month as opposed to however many, I don't want to make you feel badly about that at all. I just want to show you some examples of what other people are doing to give you hopefully some ideas and inspiration. And the three Cs that I came up with to guide your communication, these are the only things you need to remember. And actually, this will help you, you know, after the crisis subsides, whenever that might be. But right now, everyone and including us, we are in that fight or flight response. So much is being thrown at us. And literally, we are scared for our lives right now and our livelihoods. So we are not operating from a rational place. And we're opening more things than we need to or we're deleting everything or we're dealing with it all in a different way. But all of your communications should be clear. So don't bury the lead. Do not send me an email with 45 paragraphs that I don't need to read. Be concise and clear. The lead is, when you're a journalist, the lead is that first sentence that grabs your attention right after the headline and gets you to keep reading. It's the most important piece of information that grabs your attention. So don't bury the lead and then be concise. Edit, edit. Like, can you take out a sentence or a word? Or can you take out the social media icons at the bottom? Can you take out any fluff, anything that doesn't need to be there? And then please just be compassionate. So I have seen, not from nonprofit, oh, yeah. So I had an experience. I'm not going to name the organization because I am still working with them and I think they're very well-meaning. I was supposed to fly to their state on March 17th to be the keynote at their little community foundation conference. And as it got closer and closer and closer and closer to the date, literally March, March, what day was it when they finally canceled it? I think it was maybe March 14th. And I was emailing with them and saying, I'm really concerned about this conference considering your state just had a ban on gatherings over 250 people. And now, of course, all the states do. And they basically emailed me back and said that I was being, I was overreacting. I was being hysterical. And this particular person had just flown to San Francisco with their baby and they were fine and I don't know. And then they sent out this really indignant email to all of the attendees and all the speakers saying, we are joyfully moving on with the conference and we really hope you'll be there and blah, 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 and we're still going to go forward. And I thought, oh, gosh, this is not, it was kind of almost kind of indignant and, and very tone deaf. So I don't want, and then when they had to cancel it, the email that they sent out was very bitter and very much like, well, we're only canceling it because we're being forced to and we think this whole thing's overblown. And once this blows over, we're get back together. It was just not a very good attitude. It's left a really bad taste in my mouth. And I feel like if I was a supporter of that particular foundation, I would have thought, oh, well, shouldn't the compassion and empathy for what your attendees are feeling be at the forefront, right? So we want to make sure that our anger and bitterness, which I know that we have because we are going through the five stages of grief right now, doesn't bubble up to the surface like that. And I've seen that on social media and it's just, I just, I feel sad. I feel like it needs to be, I understand why people are angry about closing their businesses, but having compassion for people being scared to go outside and scared to sit in restaurants and not knowing where to go. And, you know, just have compassion for your customers or donors in this case. And then we want to make sure that we elevate trusted resources because if we are telling people where to turn for more information or how to wash our hands or whatever it is that we want to communicate, if we decide we want to communicate about this, make sure we're elevating like the CDC, the NIH and local health departments just for consistency and because those are the elevated trusted outside resources, just so that we're on the same page and we're, we are consistent ourselves in what we're sharing or what we're referring to. Is Joanne on the webinar? I can't see who's on. But Joanne shared with me, one of the fellow students, some collaboration that she had done in a group. So she's a member of this group called Communicators for Women Religious. And they had a members-only webinar and they discussed, you know, everything we're discussing now, communications. And they got a quarter of their membership on the call. And then the national organization reached out to specific members to get ideas on how to create certain communications. And I wanted to share with you what she shared with me. So they sent this out to their members, communicating during the coronavirus pandemic, which I thought was really cool. So if you're a member of an association or a group or a partnership or even just a local core of people, nonprofits, to come together and to talk about how can we communicate during this time? How can we collaborate? What do we need to do? And the link is going to be in the slides that I'm going to send to you and I can send you this link as well. And then they just came out and they almost wrote a manifesto, which I adore. So this is what we stand for. This, it's not even like, we're so awesome. This is how we're responding. It's, this is what we're doing to benefit you, our members, you know? And I love this collective reflection on the transformation to which we are being called, thinking about it in a bigger picture, legislative advocacy, spiritual bonding, whatever might make sense for your organization. So I will send you these links, but I love this response because it creates that sense of community and shared identity. And it really, really brings people together rather than separating them. And Christina says, yeah, a conference sent an email about the cost of canceling. Oh, Lord. So yeah, exactly. So I think there's a difference. And I'm going to show you some communications that I've seen about conferences canceling. Like, like the nonprofit technology conference in, which is, what day is today? I'm supposed to be there today, Baltimore. And they're a nonprofit organization. And they held off canceling the event only because they actually had people that were begging them to keep it on because it's like the one time per year they can see their community and they have a whole like queer community and a whole like people of color community in tech. And like, it's very close-knit community and I love that community too. So they sent out several emails. And then when they finally decided to cancel, they really, they sent this heartfelt video from Amy Sample Ward, the CEO. And it just, it felt very heartfelt. And if you could see the conflict that they had faced. And then they did ask, I don't know if they, they did ask if people would consider donating their registration. So they weren't strong-arming them. They weren't saying, this is going to devastate us. We're going to close. But they simply kind of mentioned it. But yeah, focused on, if you're only focused on the effects that it's going to have on you, it's not going to resonate well when people are really thinking a lot about themselves, even more than usual. I love this tweet. This is a group of hospices that got together on a big Zoom call. It's a brand-new day for everyone. You can see like, some people are clearly not used to Zoom. Some people were not on video. I just love any way that people can come together and collaborate. And then if you didn't, check out my Google Drive. I'm updating it all the time. It's this, it's just a Google Drive. And this is the link. It's in the slides. It's in the group. I'm happy to, you can share it in the chat as well. No one else can add to it. I just didn't want it to be filled with, you know, ridiculous spam and who knows what else. So I'm the only one that can add to it. So if you have something that you want to put in it, then send it to me. But direct appeals, these are fundraising appeals, general comms, virtual events, postponed events, sample social media updates, activities to do at home. This is the Wenham Museum where I live. They, they've been sending crafts home. They've been doing a lot of really cool stuff. And this is actually from Get Fully Funded, which is Sandy Reese's organization. And she's amazing. So check out this swipe file that she put together because Get Fully Funded is one of my favorite groups. So those are just, that's a swipe file. I guess I should call it a swipe file. And now a Google Drive folder. But the other thing I wanted to suggest to you is if you can find a group of similar, of people in a similar vertical. So there are arts organizations, social media groups. There's museum social media managers groups. I know there's human service groups. I'm not a member of all of the groups because I could not possibly be a member of all the groups. I am a member of the museum social media managers group because I really like it. But find a Facebook group like this. And people are constantly sharing examples and ideas and going in there and asking for advice about the specific, you know, industry, the specific topic and the specific cause. I think that's really helpful. So this is work from home, day by day. This is, I think I have this pulled up somewhere for you. Where is it? Yeah. The Gibbs Museum of Art. I really like this a lot. It kind of, you know, gives you an idea about the staff and what they're doing and who they are and a little bit about their home offices. And they have, give little tips. It'd be awesome if everyone could just give like their biggest struggle about working from home and maybe their biggest tip of from working from home. I think that would be really helpful. The other big question that I got was on content pivot. Oh, yeah. So Jennifer says, we've had an organ tissue, I donation Facebook group for people doing social media. It's an incredible resource. Yes, talk about great swipe files there. So in terms of content pivot. So this is a question I have received really frequently. So what should our social media feed look like? Do we recycle old content? I don't want to waste our new stuff. So I'm going to show you some ideas. Oh, I love, National Public Radio had an awesome IG story last week featuring their pets working from home. Yes. So we can all do that if we don't want to. Yes. So we can all do that if we don't want to share pictures of our kids. I don't actually have pets. But I could just share myself working from home or something because I'm, you know, a public, out there, I'm publicly out there. So that's really cool, featuring their pets working from home. I love that because people love to see people's pets. So that's a neat way to create new content. In terms of recycling old content. I, I don't know, as long as it's relevant. So if it's something where it's going to make someone smile, it's going to be inspiring. It's going to be relevant to your audience. It's something they want right now. You don't have to necessarily only talk about COVID nineteen. Realizing that that's really what people are thinking about and talking about right now. So we can't just say, okay, we're going to go back to our old content calendar and pretend that the, that we're not in this state of crisis. We don't have to add to panic in any way. We don't have to add to despair or overwhelm. But we have to recognize that this is the reality that we're living in right now. And you know what? Maybe your audience doesn't want to hear about it anymore and that's fine. Like Best Friends Animal Society. They sent me an email this morning and they said, let's all take a break, share pictures of your pets, blah, blah, blah. That's great. You could easily do that. I mean, everyone wants to share pictures of their pets, no matter what your mission is. You could say, share pictures of how you're working from home, share your top tips, share pictures of your pets, share your top. Takeout food, just make it relevant. Share a song that you're playing over and over right now. There's lots of ways that you can connect with people without just talking about COVID nineteen. Now, the new stuff, I think it depends if it's a fundraising ask. What, it depends on what the content is. If it is not relevant to the time period, if it's going to sound tone deaf right now, then don't post it. But if it's going to add value to your audience, they are online, screen time is dramatically up as we know. Then I say, share it. But I think right now, content calendars either have to go a little bit out of the window. Or we are going to have to adapt and start, because we are hour by hour. We are hour by hour, day by day. So we can't, I wouldn't schedule any posts right now because they could automatically be, they could be irrelevant in five hours. So we, we need to recognize that as well. And that's, that's a scary time for planners. I am a planner and I think this is why coronavirus scares me so much. Not that I worry about my family as much. I mean, we have elderly relatives, but we're all fairly healthy. None of us have respiratory infections. I worry that I can't plan. I don't know what tomorrow holds. I don't know what the next, I don't, should I, I can't plan. And I like to plan. So that's what bothers me the most. So in terms of, I just want to show you some social media posts, not saying you have to copy them, just some that I really liked. That I thought were especially relevant. So this is Amnesty International. This post could be posted absolutely any time of day. I actually need to go back and retweet it. Just giving an update, you know, if you are getting calls, if you're getting frequently asked questions, you're getting people that want to know a particular question. That might be worth a social media post or a quick email. If you have a hotline, certainly promoting the hotline frequently. What are things that people can do in their community? So what are five things they can do right now to help you that maybe are not necessarily giving money? And of course, you know, dropping off donations, you need to figure out your own policy on that. I know at our food pantry, they, our local food pantry, they've basically put a ban on people donating food. But they're taking gift cards and they're taking cash, but it's just because they can't, they don't have the, the person power to wipe down everything. And make sure everything, you know, it's just, it's, it's a crazy, crazy time that we're living in. So any way that you can get people on board and activated, people really want to help right now and they're searching for ways to help. This one, I absolutely loved this update. If you're self isolating, I can help. This is what I can do. And just to, I'm not sure. I mean, I know now we don't want to touch anything that's in print, but. Maybe putting it in an envelope. But I love these little touches of, we're all in this together. We're all human. We're all scared. How can we help? And I even saw some Facebook ads that I cut and pasted. I took some screenshots. I love this one from Volunteers of America because it talks about what's going on right now. But it puts it in a relevant way, like they cannot afford to stockpile supplies. Like, hey, I'm looking at you, America, stockpiling toilet paper and whatever else the heck you're stockpiling. Stockpiling medications. My sister-in-law went to Market Basket a few days ago and she said she was trying to find eye drops. And some woman in front of her bought like ten things of eye drops, like more eye drops than you would ever need in your entire lifetime. She's like, that's really cool. Like why, what if people really need eye drops? So I love this ad, donate now. I think completely fundraising, we'll talk about fundraising. I think fundraising is fine to do right now if it's for an emergency. If you have an emergency fund or if you are genuinely needing the help. I mean, I completely think it's fine to fundraise. St. Baldry's pivoted to virtual shave events almost immediately. I saw this starting to happen. I saw this ad starting to pop up at the start of March because they, I mean, my God, they're, oh my God, their whole thing. Happens really on March seventeenth, which is when, that was one of the hardest days for everybody. And they do shaving events where entire schools will come and sponsor one or two kids. And then they'll be up on the stage and everyone will cheer them on. And like I would, you know, shave my head and donate my hair and my friends and family would cheer me on. So now they're trying to do virtual shave events. They're just pivoting and they're doing virtual shave events. And that's, that's how they're adapting. It remains to be seen. All of this is up in the air. Who knows if any of this is successful? But I think that they're having a lot of success. Okay, Facebook Live. I hope Bethany is on the webinar because this was a question that um, my friend Bethany sent to me. And she said that she had an emergency call at two, so she might be on at two thirty. But if not, she, I'll get back with her later. But Atashi also had this question. So the Facebook Lives and Insta Stories, so how long should these be? So those are two separate questions. So Insta Stories, Instagram Stories. Those are the little clips that you share that disappear in twenty-four hours that live in the Instagram Stories feed. And they can be five seconds long videos, or you can have a long video just cut into clips and photos. So if you're not familiar with Instagram Stories and you are on Instagram, log in, go to the top of your feed. And actually, I should hook up my phone and show you, but I won't do that today. And watch a bunch of stories and just see kind of how they work. And try to get the feel and look of them, but they're very in the moment. Instagram Stories right now, for nonprofits, I think they're going to be, it's harder to get, it's harder to get photos. It's harder to get stories and photos from people because you're not in the office. So that's going to be challenging for you. So you'll probably be sharing memes or facts, graphics that you've designed. Or just photos of yourself working from home, photos of your pet. I don't know. So that's what we were talking about when we said the NPR story. Oh, I wonder if it's still up. Let me look at, because I can actually show you. NPR's Instagram story. Okay, so this is desktop. Oh, look, they've got two coronavirus highlights. These are highlights and they don't disappear within twenty-four hours. But this is their story. So, oh, they only have a couple of stories out today. Oh, the Daily Life. These are probably some of the stories that they're trying to highlight, the actual articles that they're trying to highlight. And then you can actually add polls into that. So I missed, oh, there's NPR Pets. Yay. Our, I love this. Okay, so this is on their highlights, which means you can watch it anytime you want. And then you can also create a highlight very easily in your Instagram Stories, which means it doesn't disappear within twenty-four hours. This is really cool. Oh, I love this. Okay, so take a look at this when you get a chance. Oh, I love it. That's very cute. So this is going to be, when you go to the nprinstagram.com/NPR, it's going to be NPR Pets. And then you can see kind of how they use stories in these different segments. But that's a really cool one and that's a really cool example. And that's something that you could easily do. Or you could do a photo album on Facebook if you don't want to do stories. Wendy did make a good point about length. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. And then Kevin, I'm not sure Kevin, if you're on today, but he offered to show the group his setup and his process. Because he's been live streaming from church and I told him that'd be an awesome idea. So he might do a Facebook Live inside the group or a video showing us his setup and what he does for Facebook Live, which I thought would be really helpful. Harbor Light Community Partners, this is Bethany. So they have COVID nineteen response page up on their website. This is where I live in the town next to me in Beverly. They're working on a pen pal idea as well as using email and video chat. What about a Zoom pal idea? I just got an idea. I just got an idea. I love that pen pal idea, but what about like a Zoom pal? I'm thinking of people that are stuck in nursing homes and hospitals that can't have visitors. Maybe they could have a Zoom pal. And the Facebook Live. So these were her questions and I feel like they're, they're pretty similar. How long should he talk? So the length of a Facebook Live, it's debatable. I mean, don't go longer than you need to. Don't just fill up the space. But Facebook Live generally should be at least seven minutes. Because what happens when you go live on your Facebook page. Your A-listers, your most engaged people will get a notification. And then around seven minutes, now this is not published anywhere, but this is what Mari Smith and Brian Fanzo and a lot of famous live streamers have said. Around the seven minute mark, your B-listers get a notification. So you get even more people on board. So that's why I've, I have noticed that at the seven and eight minute point, I get a spike in viewership. It's interesting. So at least seven minutes, but be relevant and make sure people understand why, why they're watching it. So what I worry about with Facebook Live is that people spend a lot of time in the beginning saying, hi, I've never done this before. I'm really nervous. Please bear with me. Don't mind the tech. Don't mind the this. Don't do any of that because then you immediately make people nervous. And you kind of make people feel awkward for you. So don't say you're nervous. Don't say it's your first time. Just go right into it. Just say, hi, you know, I am Julia Campbell. I'm the executive director of J. Campbell Social Marketing. And I'm here today to talk to you about XYZ. This is how it's going to work. We're going to go live. I'm going to take your questions, post them in the comments and questions. Please share this. If you're donating, you know, if you're asking for donations, say, we're doing this to raise money for our emergency fund. Please hit donate, the donate button to make a donation. So just be very explicit as to what you're trying to achieve. Put any links in the comments that people might need for references. Far in advance. I think a week, a week in advance. And then you want to make sure you're promoting it and you're publicizing it. And I actually have examples of how to do that. And this is not a dumb question. Once we go live, does the content stay on the pages of recording? Yes. So it will be in your videos tab, once you're done recording it. And then you can download it. So this is what I do with all my Facebook Lives. Not my course ones, but anything I do on my page. I download it as an MP4 and then I put it on YouTube. So I put it up on YouTube. I put the same, you know, I just put a title and a headline and tags and do all the stuff that I need to do for YouTube. And then I embed it into my blog and I write a blog post about it. So that I can repurpose it several different ways. So you can definitely take it as an MP4 and cut it into pieces and make little snippets of it. It's your file to have as you, to do with as you want. And you would definitely announce it via Constant Contact. So some tips that I have are, if you're going to go live more than once, so I know, you know, for instance, Isabel's, my daughter's community house. They are going to start doing dance lessons at one PM every Wednesday, Facebook Live. Try, if you are going to do something like that, try to have it on a schedule that people can remember. Let people, you know, you're going to go live. I like BeLive TV, which is a free service. And this is something, this is an example of how you can promote it. So I like BeLive TV as kind of a studio. If you're going to bring other people in, if you want to share your screen. Zoom is the best, but you can broadcast Zoom to Facebook Live, but it's not in the free version. And then you can add the donate button. You can encourage people to give. You can, we talked about going live for seven minutes. I would say right now, you don't need a specific call to action. Normally, I would say you have to have a call to action for your Facebook Live, but if you're just doing a free concert or an interview or an informative something, you don't necessarily need that. You might want to ask people to sign up for your email list so they can get more updates and so that they can get notified when you're going to go live again. This is what Amira does. They put this on Instagram. They put this on Twitter. They put this on their social media. They promoted a week before and then a few days before, and then the day of they promoted. And this is what they're doing, upcoming virtual events. So they decided to take four of their different events that were supposed to be live and make them virtual. So they put them all together in one announcement. The Cincinnati Zoo, I love this. They're going, they're doing a Facebook Live each weekday at three PM. So they're making a commitment to do that and they're raising money every day, every weekday at three PM with just the donate button out. And they already raised, you know, over sixteen hundred dollars, just that one first time. So they're planning on doing that. Now, Browser Board Cares Food Pantry, they didn't put the donate button on there, but they just wanted to answer questions. So they wanted to be the source of information for their community. People were coming to them and asking them, are you going to stay open? What kind of things can we donate? Can we come and volunteer? What about elderly people that rely on this? That kind of stuff. So having a Q and A is really worthwhile. So you see this is vertical. Vertical, holding your phone vertical, that works for Instagram Stories, that works for Instagram Live. But for everything else, hold your phone horizontally and it works better, or do it from a laptop or a desktop. Okay, taking events virtual. Oh, I see a question. Oh, what do you think of Google Hangouts? I love Google Hangouts, but um, there's no way to get people to give you their email in Google Hangout. Oh, I mean, so for me, I like Zoom because I like to follow up with people after a webinar. And also I know they're going to ask for the recording and the slides. So I always want their email if I'm doing a webinar. Facebook Live, I like Facebook Live because it gives you that juice within Facebook. And you're going to have thousands of people seeing it after. So you might only have seventy people on live. And then I always have at least a couple of thousand people re-watch it after the fact. So Facebook loves Facebook Lives. It gives it that juice in the algorithm. Google Hangouts is awesome because you can pull as many people as you want in and it has live captioning, which is really cool, which Zoom does not have. Which I'm, that is my one thing with Zoom. And I don't know how it, it doesn't have that. That must be something that they're going to come up with. I asked them about it and they said, oh, there are captions available, but you have to type them in live. And I was like, I have to type them in as I talk? So I would have to hire someone to type anyway, a whole thing. But that's one advantage of Google Hangouts. I love Google Hangouts. I think they're a great way. The problem is that you're not going to get that critical mass of people because on Facebook Live, people kind of see it and they get notified. If they're on Facebook, they're going to get a notification and that's how you build more of a critical mass. Julie says, we're nonprofit family care. We have our teachers send us a video of doing a craft, reading a book, cooking. And then we post to Facebook so our students can see the teachers. I feel Facebook is the best tool. Should we share to other sites as well? I, I mean, if, okay, so the, the fam, they send the video not via Facebook. I would put them, I would put them on YouTube unless the teachers only want them to go to the students. But you can make it, you can make it on YouTube unlisted. You can have it unlisted. Like I upload all of these to YouTube, but nobody else can watch them unless they have the specific link. So you can do that as well, or you can do Vimeo. So you can do that as well, or you can do Vimeo, which you can actually encrypt and make, have a password, have it be password protected and create a special section of Vimeo or Wistia or any other video hosting site just for your students. So I think it's good to have maybe another option besides Facebook or maybe just a Google Drive of all the videos. And then people can just use whatever they want. I think that might work as well. So if they don't have Facebook, you can say, we're going to put all these videos in a Google Drive or we're going to put all these videos in, um, on YouTube, but you have to have the special link to use them. I do think having more than one option for people is good, but I think that the majority of people will probably be on Facebook. I mean, if they're like my age group, they'll probably be there. Okay, now we got a lot to talk about, but I don't think we're going to be able to do all of it. Taking events virtual, that could be another, that could be another two hour workshop at least. I love this idea though. I wanted to highlight this from Karen. Sending guests a gourmet meal to their home. A live video share of music and chatting. I love that. Auction is cloud-based. I love it. All of that is absolutely fantastic. Those are wonderful ideas. These are some ways that other people are doing it. Our canceling events or postponing events, these are just some examples. I love this example on the right-hand side. Your health and wellbeing is of the utmost importance. And although we are a small gathering, we must take every responsible precaution to keep our friends and supporters safe. That's what we're doing. Yep, Karen posted that in our Facebook group. So thank you, Karen. I love it. I think it's great. So compassion, compassion, compassion is key. This is an example I got from Claire Axelrad. And if you do not follow her, Axelrad. Her blog is called Clarification. I think I'm spelling it right. And she's another fantastic resource for you. But she shared this, how her school took the gateway gathering virtual. So this is all just part of your swipe file. They managed to take everything virtual and still have a really great time. And I think they actually raised a lot of money. This is how it was on Facebook, or this was on YouTube. They decided to do YouTube Live. That was just what they decided to do. And I think, I know on Zoom, you can actually broadcast to you, to Facebook Live and YouTube Live at the same time simultaneously. So that's pretty cool. This is a blog post from St. Baldrex talking about how to make virtual shave fun. So the key is really just to get people excited and tell people how to do it. Because we have to remember, our followers, they're not used to doing virtual fundraising. Like the majority of people have not run a digital fundraising campaign in their life. So they're used to doing things the way they've always done it. And if it's a race or if it's something that's always been in person, it's going to be a lot more challenging for a lot of people. And then if you just click on that when you get the slides, you'll be able to see that blog post for your swipe files. So digital fundraising, some ideas. I mean, I've seen virtual happy hours. I really think that, you know, peer-to-peer fundraising and Facebook fundraising are 100% going to explode in popularity, especially Facebook fundraising that's not only due to birthdays. And I think it's completely fine to fundraise right now. I have seen nothing but really amazing appeals, to be honest with you. The appeals that I've gotten are so few and far between, but they've all been really great. And the ones that I've personally given to were, one, the Community Theater, where my daughter does her plays because they sent this heartfelt appeal saying, we've had to cancel our shows, like we're postponing everything. We had to cancel camp. And they just really explained it in a way that, and also I know them. So that might have helped and I feel a real connection to them, and that's the key. And then another organization was a domestic violence shelter that sent this appeal talking about what shelter in place is going to mean for families that are struggling and how they're trying to do a text service. And they're trying to have more counselors available 24/7 on the phone and just really talking about how they're thinking innovatively about how to reach their community virtually during this time. I can't, that is, I can't even imagine. I loved this one. You know, even with our doors closed, this is what we're doing. And then they sent a poem and I thought that was really good. I liked that one. The Naples Zoo Emergency Operating Fund, like, don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to tell people exactly what's going on and to ask them to contribute because people are scared and people are unsure and people don't. But what I found and in my research, and actually my husband is a history major, and he was saying that in recessions, giving actually stays pretty level or even goes up a little bit from individuals. Because what happens is we know how bad we have it, but we know that other people have it 12 times worse. So we often tend to give what little we can give rather than hoarding it or saving it for a rainy day because this is like basically a rainy day. So everything we think about people not giving, like maybe major gifts will go down because people's stock portfolios were decimated. But those $10, $20, $100 gifts, I, I just don't see them going away completely. But then again, I don't have crystal ball. I wish that I did. Making sure you're thanking people, over the top thanking them right now because that is a struggle for them to give that $10 when none of us know, like if we're going to be employed tomorrow or what's going to happen or what the stock market's doing, what unemployment is doing. So thanking, 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 telling people even more than we normally do what the result of their donations are and how much of an impact that it really can make. This I took from Claire's blog because she received this email when she donated to that Playhouse Appeal. And it was, it was a note on top of the automated response. And I think doing that right now, like being over the top in thanking, even just setting up an email, you can do BombBomb. I think it's called BombBomb, BombBomb, which is a free video service. If you have Gmail, there is a video service that I use. What is it called? Free Video Email by Cloud HQ. Free Video Email by Cloud HQ. And that's how I sent all of you those embedded videos when you signed up for the course. I tried to send one to absolutely everybody and I apologize if I didn't at the end. But I did try to send one to everyone, but that's what I used. And it's so easy to just embed a little video and send a personal message because if you're really appreciative, it's worth it to take the time to do that. And then also double down on YouTube right now. So if you haven't had any time to explore YouTube, you probably don't have any time right now. But if you have any kind of video content, we're all going to be creating more video, whether it's Facebook Live video, whatever it is. Put it all on YouTube because YouTube is the number two search engine. People are searching for things there. They're searching for things. And because I don't have time to do an entire YouTube webinar right now, my main tips, Get TubeBuddy, it's an app that you link up to your YouTube and it helps you determine what to title your videos, what even to make videos about. It will let you enter search terms and it will say, oh, lots of people are searching on this. This is a good search term to use. It's amazing. And I have the free version, but I know there's a lot of bells and whistles in the paid version. So nonprofits can get 25% off. And then this article on Medium is written by Mark Horvath and Invisible People. He used TubeBuddy for 10 minutes a day for a month. A month or maybe two months, just to improve his videos. And he went from 40,000 views to 4 million views. So even if you don't have 40,000 views, even if you have four views, think about how you can exponentially increase those views. So those resources, just doubling down on YouTube, I think will really help you. Another thing that I wanted to talk briefly about and maybe get your feedback on this is, oh, Erica from my office says, how about virtual happy hour? Virtual happy hour. I've already attended several virtual happy hours, even though on my antibiotics, I can't drink. But I've already attended a few and I thought they were great because you can go in, you can come out. There's no pressure to, you know, there's no pressure to join, but there's no pressure to stay. I mean, there's a bunch of people in there. I love virtual happy hours. How are we feeling about this question? So we felt like we were in superhero communicator mode, but now we feel overwhelmed by information and things to do. So how do we take care of ourselves? How do we respond instead of react? I talked a little bit about it in the beginning, some of my strategies. But other things I've found that have really helped me that might not be possible for you is that I've had dedicated time at night where my phone is actually off. So my husband and I always have a phone on because of emergencies. But I have had my phone off. And I've been going to bed earlier, actually, which has been really helping. But I'm trying my hardest not to be overwhelmed constantly by notifications. And I'm trying my hardest to give helpful information, but really cut through all of it and only share the best stuff. And that's the only advice I can give to all of you. You know, pick what's going to be the most helpful for your audience and share that. Don't feel like you have to share absolutely everything or create things from scratch. Don't feel like you have to create things from scratch. There are a lot of great resources out there. So don't get overwhelmed. We need you. We absolutely need you and we will help you. Okay, I managed to stay on task. Some tools from how to focus working from home. Tammy, you kind of stumped me. Focus, I think is, was stumping me. Oh, the Pomodoro technique. Have people heard of this? Pomodoro. I'm Googling it. This is where the Tomato Timer. So this is a technique where you work in intervals that can be, I don't know, 25 minutes, 20 minutes, and then you take a break and then you stand up. I kind of do it, I'm going to show you this. I kind of do it here and there. It's called Tomatotimer.com. So I think this is actually really helpful for social media. Let's see, send. It's very helpful for social media especially, where you have a set timer, where you are, that's all that you're doing. So you're only doing checking Facebook and doing all your Facebook stuff for 25 minutes. And no matter what you get done, you have to end in 25 minutes. And then you stand up and do something or you shift gears or you go get a drink of water or you like mentally change and then you do another task for 25 minutes. That's something that helps me focus. Another thing that actually helps me focus, I haven't done it really well, is time blocking. So I used to do this religiously before the new reality that we're in. I would set my day, I would set my week and I would say, the, this is what I have to have, this is what I have to accomplish, like I have to create a slide deck. And I would block three hours of my calendar, slide deck. And then I would say, okay, I have to do XYZ and I would time block it. So I physically put it in my calendar. And then that would help me see how much time I was spending on things. And then that would also really help me not take phone calls during that time, try to not schedule meetings during that time. Another thing that I've seen that has helped, I'm, I'm not sure we can do that now in today's day and age, that I was going to try to do was only take Zoom calls or, or conference calls on set days and do them back to back to back to back to back. Some people work like that. Some people don't. A fantastic book downstairs. Is it? No, it's in my bedroom. It's called Work From Work. No, I don't know what it's called. Productivity Styles, Work Styles. Oh my God. You know that I just did an Instagram story about this? Oh gosh, it's a great book. Does anyone remember what I was talking about? It's a fantastic book. Oh, I have listed on my blog. I'll say, I'm still just having like fuzzy brain. So in the blog post that I wrote, my advice on working from home. You need to find your productivity style. Yes, your work style, work simply. Okay. This book is great because no matter what advice I give you, it's going to be geared to what I do. And you might have a very different work style. So work simply helps you figure out your work style. So not surprisingly to anybody, I'm the prioritizer slash planner. So you're going to do a quiz and it's going to give you a score. And I actually had high scores in all of them. Like there wasn't one that just completely blew away the other ones. But prioritizer was number one, planner was number two. And then it gives you tips based on your specific work style, which I think is great because I just don't think there's any productivity system that works for everybody. I personally, like I can show you my calendar on the wall. I don't know if you can see it. This is what I like to do because I am obsessed with planning. I put different colored Post-it notes. So green is travel, which obviously is probably going to be canceled. Pink is webinars. Orange is the course. I don't know what else I have on here. Blue is, blue are client audits and client meetings. So I like to do that because then I get a visual for things that I have going on and then I match it up with my electronic calendar. But I just, I like to have that in the background. And then I like to have a pretty much completely clean desk. That just works completely for me. So tools to focus, I wish that I had more of them. Turning off notifications is probably my number one, my number one tip. Oh yay, Deva, it's a Devani. Devani says, thank you for telling us about Canva for nonprofits. I applied on Saturday and got pro access the same day. This was important because we needed to let people know that our food pantry is open and still serving the public through social media. Yes, I would even say, any of you, if you can try to get some press coverage or an op-ed about what you're doing and the importance to the community to let people know that you're still open, you're still providing services. I saw in one of my other groups, it's called the Progressive Exchange. There was a community health center and they wrote in and they said, it's all well and good for everyone to be giving medical supplies to hospitals. I think that's fantastic, she said, but the community health centers are also doing some great work. And here are five bullets. And I wrote back to her and I said, I think this would be a great op-ed. You could make a video about this. I mean, this is information that people need to know that they don't know. So anything that you have like that, that you think would make a great letter to the editor or even, you know, a great video that you can send out, working with a local blogger, anything that you can do to elevate the important things that you're doing right now and to educate the community as to the importance right now. It's going to be hard, but I think it's going to be worth it. So quickly, in the next module, we're going to go through metrics and measurement. We'll definitely still be touching on these themes next week. This is the new syllabus, the new and improved syllabus, just to keep everybody on track. And we will be doing, I'm sorry, I didn't update that slide, but we will be doing a Facebook Live this Thursday, the 26th at 4:30. So bring your questions and I'll have this recording up in the group by, by the end of the day today or by tomorrow morning. Okay, so I want to stand for just a couple more minutes. If anyone has any last minute questions, I know I went over an hour and I apologize. A lot to cover, making sure, make sure that you go into that swipe file and get some inspiration. And if you have any examples that you would like to send to me to share with the world, please do. Everyone can only benefit from that. Until we meet again, I would say go into the Facebook group. You can always email me and then I'm going to do a Facebook Live. Thank you. I am so, I'm glad to be feeling better. I'm feeling a little hot right now, but I think because of all the new lights that I have, I have in here. But my plan for the rest of the day is to just sit on the couch with the kids and watch a Disney movie. So I really appreciate all of you so much. Thanks so much for the great work that you're doing. And we'll talk again on Thursday. Okay, take care. Bye.